Marys County Board of Education to order for Wednesday, July eighth, two thousand and fifteen. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section nine dash five twelve A, numbers one, two, six, and ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, so carry. I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the Saint Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, July eighth, two thousand and fifteen. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we move to approve the agenda, I just wanted to share with everyone that Mrs. Weaver had sent an email to Mr. Smith and myself indicating that she is resigning her post as vice chairman and that she will return to the Board of Education meetings in October. Okay, and with that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Well, and also our student board members not here today.
Oh, yes, and she isn't just not here today, so.
Enjoying summer.
Actually, she is at a very prestigious conference.
I'm gonna bring back the.
Let's still enjoy the summer.
Absolutely. Motion to approve, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we will start with board reports. Mrs. Crosby, you are first.
Yes, I have been vacationing for three weeks. I'll make it short. We went flounder fishing, and it's improved in Chinkitik, Chinkitik. I caught some flounder. My son came down, he caught some twenty-three inch flounder, and I'm not too jealous, but they tasted good. Josie, my granddaughter, came down, Jennifer, my son's girlfriend, and my brother and his wife, we like everybody to come, everybody here can come next year. So anyway, we had a wonderful time. I'm gonna tell you the highlight of my trip. Josie, my little nine-year-old, went out with my son and the girlfriend every night to go to this amusement park. Well, she went and bought a muscle, which is a hard muscle, and then it was a pearl. And with it came a little container you put the pearl in, and it was a present for me. And it stands for help, because she's worried about my walking, so my granddaughter, that to me is all she wrote.
Very nice.
Very nice, thank you.
Okay. All right, I too have been vacationing and dodging the sharks in the Outer Banks and then spending my time on a softball field with my daughter's all-star team in Calverd County. So, and not to Mrs. McCourt, I've been driving back and forth to Dunkirk almost every day since the Fourth of July, so that is all I have. Oh, wait, one more thing, I did attend yesterday, Letty Marshall Dent had their library day up at the Charlotte Hall Library, and they, teachers, principals, staff members, everyone's there just to promote reading, and they do different activities with the children, and they do a scavenger hunt, so it was a really, they had a very good turnout, so it was about for two hours yesterday. So everyone, keep reading.
That's right, that was fun. Hello, I attended the thirteenth annual Celebration Ball for the ladies and gentlemen of the village. It was held at Cream, the King's Christian Academy in Calaway, Maryland, and the theme of the program was, "I am a gift, you are a gift." I was the keynote speaker, and I talked about never quit, no matter the sudden and unexpected circumstances in your life, and to finish the race. The students were awarded with many recognitions for their outstanding academic success throughout the year. Parents, guardians, volunteer sponsors were also applauded for their many volunteer hours. So what is the Institute for Human Growth and Human Development? It is a community-based, community-development organization that is housed in Saint Mary's County. It is established to work with and for families in the tri-county area of southern Maryland. It works to bring programs to the community that will encourage, support, strengthen, and challenge families and individuals to be the best that they can be holistically. They implement and monitor programs or seek existing community programs which address the following areas of one's life: social, spiritual, emotional, academic, financial, service, career vocational, and civic. The Institute of Human Growth and Development works directly with children in grades pre-K through twelve, the adult members and their families, and other adults in the community. This work is carried out within a safe and supportive, yet challenging environment. The adults are expected and trained to serve as role models for the youth. The youth, as well as the adults, are taught and expected to show respect to all, and all are expected to succeed within a peaceful and loving society. It was a wonderful event, and this is a wonderful after-school and community program that many of our students participate in, and the success rate of the students going on to college in that program is one hundred percent. Thank you.
I attended a meeting of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Conference Planning Committee. The Conference Planning Committee prepares for and sets up the annual conference held by MAB. We have some really good sessions planned for this fall's conference. I thought particularly of note, on Thursday, there's a session on return on investment, the connection between the school system and the local economy, public expense or public investment, and I'm really intrigued to attend that one specifically. And there's also going to be another one on Ten Secrets for Stabilizing School Boards to Improve District Performance, and the College and Career Readiness Standards Act, Where Are We Today? And the two speakers, the two keynote speakers we have contracted with seem to be very dynamic, and I think their messages are gonna be well-done. We're kind of focusing on career and college readiness, so for the overarching theme of the coming meeting, so, or coming conference, so we look forward to that, the end of September, beginning of October. That's it. Mr. Smith?
Meetings, 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 hiring, 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 fantastic people coming on board Saint Mary's County Public Schools. While all that is going on, work is going on in all of our buildings, maintenance programs, construction at Spring Ridge Middle School, the finishing touches on Captain Walter Francis Duke. To highlight special education, summer services are being provided to over four hundred kids, about four hundred and thirty kids, infants and toddlers program, summer fun camp for two, three, and four-year-olds, Camp Inspire, Camp New Horizons, SMCS, SMCPS is partnering with Park and Recs, there are some intensive needs summer programs, there's individualized summer classroom programs, there's ESY, there's vision services provided to students. And then next week, we start our summer enrichment camps, so we've got over two hundred and twenty students that are gonna be part of Foreign Language Extension and Education Camp, Tech Camp for Kids, Space Camp, of course, that's partnered with, co-sponsored with the PACS Partnership. So there are a lot of things going on this summer, we are busy at work for you and with your children. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing, Sandra, did we have anyone signed up?
No one for public comment.
Oh, sorry, public comment, sorry. All right, the consent agenda, I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, first up, Mr. Dave Howard.
This one won't. No, it won't. I still. No, 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 you have to put it down. Wait, watch. Just watch. Oh, now, what's that say? All right, I don't know what's going on, you just have to show my. Maybe. No. There's some extra jacket brass ready, so here I am, right here. Oh, okay, you can just share mine. Oh, gotcha. Thanks. Nice to be the lightest.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
I'm here today to ask the approval to purchase Promethean Active Touch television monitors, they're interactive television monitors for Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. We're looking to purchase seven off of a contract that we're utilizing, we would like to utilize from Prince William County. We're actually getting better pricing than what's offered off of the normal contract from Prince William. We're getting a one-time discount of twelve hundred dollars off of the total order. The screens are going to be used in areas of the media center, computer labs, IRT rooms, and conference rooms. These televisions, let me pull this up a little bit, are going to be nicely mounted on the wall, there's not going to have an overhead projector, so it's all going to be enclosed, it's going to look really nice in some of these areas to focus the new high school, the new elementary school. And they're changing the model, a lot of the projector technologies, you're seeing more and more doing everything in the same unit now. The price points about twice as much as what we have been paying for the projector and board, but the resolution is so much nicer, you can see it from the backside of the room a lot clearer, if you're having issues with ambient light, the students will be able to really get what the teacher's content is. So this work here, we'll have the installation, so we're looking forward to it, we're evaluating one other one, and this one came in at about a thousand dollars cheaper than the smart version. So if I have any questions I can answer about these?
Mrs. Crosby?
No, thank you very much.
I don't have any, Mrs. Washington?
No questions.
Is that on?
No questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, oh, go ahead. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt you. All right, then may I have a motion for this action item, please?
I move that the Board of Education of Saint Mary's County approve the purchase and installation of seven Promethean Active Panel Touch seventy-inch displays for Captain Walter Francis Duke School to Clinton Learning Solutions at a grant total of thirty-five thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars, utilizing the Prince William Public Schools contract R-dj-14047-02.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hartwick, utilization of the contract for re-roofing at Spring Ridge Middle School.
Good morning.
This action item is to ask your approval to use an existing in Saint Mary's County government contract for re-roofing one of the state-owned units at Spring Ridge Middle School. As the board knows, we moved two four-classroom unit down to Spring Ridge Middle School last summer in support of the renovation. These units are over forty years old, and we've been able to patch one of the roofs successfully. The other unit, quite frankly, we need to replace the entire roof, and hence this action item to the, we provided you a little background information, but let me just show you the existing condition there of these units. And, you know, the resolution isn't real good, but you can see that water is ponding all along the perimeter of this unit, and the units were originally designed so the water would run out of these scuppers placed along the perimeter. Well, that's not happening. And so was, what leading to the deterioration of this roof is having that ponding water, and it basically infiltrates the seam, so we have to address that problem, we couldn't just put another membrane on top of that roof. So to look at it and be thoughtful about it, we brought in our roofing consultant Restoration Engineering to assess and evaluate and design a solution, and I think we've come up with a really innovative solution. Because the main challenge of these units is, they're composed, they're sixty-by-sixty unit, but they're composed of five twelve-by-sixty units but together, and these units are going to be moved to other locations after the renovation. So how do you anticipate moving those units and design a roof that will have minimal damage when you move it? So what we did, and this kind of shows you the outline, and you can see these are those five, twelve-by-sixty units, and there are five of those. And so what we've done is, we've taken a standard detail that you see in buildings, when you butt things together, you build an expansion joint, and basically what that allows it to do, you've got some blocking at that seam, and the roofing membrane comes up on that blocking, and then you have a metal cap over the top of that, and so that is what we've done at those five seams. So when it comes time to separate the unit, the segment, we just take off that cap and separate the unit. The other thing that we've done is, we're gonna build up that roof using tapered insulation. So there is a ridge in the center, and the water will be directly flowing to those scuppers, so we'll have positive drainage as a result. So with those two items, we fully expect to get fifteen-year service life out of this roof even after moving the unit. So in order to accomplish this work, we propose using an existing Saint Mary's County government unit price contract for roofing, which was competitively bid and awarded to Lincoln Roofing. The Department of Maintenance has had a lot of experience with this contract in the past, with their roofing needs with Lincoln. The Department of Design and Construction has had a number of projects where Lincoln has been the subcontractor. Lincoln is a locals firm based in Hollywood, they've been in business for about twenty-nine years, and they've held a similar contract with the county since two thousand and six. The other nice quality about this is that Lincoln specializes in the membrane that we're using, the EPDM, so they specialize in that. We've reviewed their proposal and the contract, we believe the proposal is in conformity with that contract, the contract has been extended to February two thousand and sixteen. The price of thirty-six thousand seven hundred is a good price for us, we looked at other options that were higher. So given the extent of work, but the possibility that we may have to replace some of the roofing deck, which we can't see right now, we're asking for a construction contingency of six thousand dollars as part of this action item. The project is eligible for state reimbursement at sixty-four percent of the cost. We currently have a state balance in the project of over sixty thousand dollars. We also have a local balance in the Spring Ridge project of approximately seventy-seven thousand. So the state contribution at sixty-four percent would be twenty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight, the local thirteen thousand two hundred and twelve, so we would have a considerable balance left both with the state and local as we continue to use these units through the next year. So with that, we ask that you approve the use of the Saint Mary's County government contract, SMC thirteen-bS-five-six-six-three-five-three, to Lincoln Roofing in the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars, and further authorize a construction contingency of six thousand dollars for the re-roofing of a state modular unit at Spring Ridge Middle School. I'll take your questions.
Mrs. Crosby?
As usual, you've gone and told us what the history is with this firm, you've done all your homework, and I'm totally for what you've proposed, I think it's great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Okay.
No crying.
No crying. Thank you for doing a wonderful job, you did a thorough job, we need to protect these learning cottages because we will probably have to move them again, the roof needs to have sustainability, and we need to protect our assets, which are inside the building and the people that are inside the building, so great job, you gave us plenty of information, and we appreciate it, and you do it each time, so thank you very much.
Mrs. Allen?
You know, we used to think schools lasted for, you know, forty, fifty, sixty years and longer, it's amazing to me that these have been in use for forty years, and with what we're doing, I would expect them to go for a great deal longer. The question for you, when do you expect the work will start on this, and when will it be completed?
I think we can start fairly rapidly, probably in a matter of a week, and probably three or four weeks worth of work. All the, all the, all the materials are kind of stock items, there's no special order.
Okay.
Yep.
And, you know, my only other question, I guess since it's going to be happening so soon, thankfully, with all that ponding of water, I would imagine the mosquitoes are a significant issue with the units as they stand currently, so I would think that will help that as well. That's all. Thanks for bringing this.
Okay. Do I have a motion regarding, can you read that?
Yes.
Barry's gonna read it, it's really small.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's small. I move that the Board of Education approve the use of Saint Mary's County government's contract, SMC thirteen-bS-six-six-three-five-four, to Lincoln Contractors Incorporated in the amount of thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars for a re-roofing of a state modular unit at Spring Ridge Middle School, and further authorizes a construction contingency of six thousand dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, painting at two schools, Mr. We.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Each year we, for the past seven years now, we've had to paint the interior of some schools and the exterior of others. From year to year, that varies whether we can paint an entire school or a portion of a school depending on the size. Average elementary schools are forty thousand to seventy-two thousand square foot, where our high school, as you can imagine, is about two, each one of our high schools is right there, two hundred and fifty thousand square foot. So the Department of Maintenance maintains approximately two-point-three million square foot of schools and office spaces. Each year, as the budget allows, interior painting is executed in accordance with the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for Educational Facilities, which is presented each year to the Board of Education and the county. This year, the second of three phases of painting will take place at Leonard Town High School, and interior painting at Green Holly Elementary School is the focus. Interior painting was last executed in two thousand and one at Leonard Town High School, interior painting was last executed in nineteen ninety-nine at Green Holly Elementary School. Elementary school paint tends to hold up a little longer than high school, and it has a lot to do with the volume of students in the hallways and the classrooms and the use. Interior painting is currently targeted at ten-year intervals, but annually, this is adjusted based on actual conditions of the interior paint and the budget. This year, what we propose is we, we, the different colors represent different items within the bid, but what we're trying to do is, this year, we're trying to complete the hall, last year, we completed the gymnasium ceiling, the balance of the hallways that you don't see colored here. This year, we would like to complete the rest of the hallways, the stairwells, which are a challenge because you have to buy special equipment to get up into the stairwells, they're open stairwells. And then we'd like to do the same on the second floor, and then next year, we'll attack all the classrooms with the exception of some office spaces, which we take care of in-house during the school year when we can. At Leonard Town, I mean, Green Holly Elementary School, this section of the building here was recently underwent a minor renovation, I would call it, to accommodate, was it two years ago?
Yep.
Went under, underwent a minor renovation to support Head Start Program and some other activities that were going there, so we don't need to paint that section right now. And then on the other side of the building, or the B-side closest to two thirty-five, we'd like to paint all the classrooms, and we're avoiding these two areas because they're being used for a summer program, so we'll have to defer those to next year, and the gymnasium because it just does not need a coat of paint currently. The procurement method was used in accordance with Board of Education Policy, DJC. The painting services were advertised on June sixteenth on the Maryland Marketplace, this is a typo, I apologize, we received bids from four contractors or four suppliers, and that'll reflect in the bid tab on June thirtieth. Nine suppliers were invited directly to bid, but it was available to every painting contractor and general contractor that was available through the Maryland Marketplace. Four contractors responded to the bid, the four contractors were Colossal Contracting, Aaron Contracting, Titan, and Tito. Out of the four that responded, we have had experience with Colossal, Titan, and Tito in the past. The lowest bid was Tito at sixty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is in line with our budget, our budget, we had budgeted or estimated this year to do those areas, it would cost us, I think it was two hundred dollars, I have sixty-eight thousand in my budget, sixty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, or three hundred and ninety-six dollars, so I hit that. Unfortunately, though, my projections did include item number four, which are the cafeteria at Leonard Town High School, so my budget was off. We do use our SMEAS to do our budgeting, and we also look at previous year bids, we escalate them by Consumer Price Index for the southeast region. So usually, we hit it right on, I was very disappointed. There is a large discrepancy in the cost, I do think what happened was, especially with Green Holly, is Green Holly, quite a bit of the area we're painting is covered with cement block, I'm sorry, ceramic blocking, to about a height of about four and a half foot, and I don't think all the bidders took that into consideration because they don't have to paint that area. I think the other was the method in which they use, we do not specify method of paint, we specify the paint, we specify what has to be done, but we do not get into means and methods or how they accomplish their work. And in the past, when we've worked with Tito, they tend to use a spray method rather than a roll and a brush, and I believe that's another reason that they were able to price the stairwells or the whole job so efficiently. So we're recommending to the board that we approve the contract award to Tito Contractors Incorporated of Washington, DC, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars for bid items one, two, three, and five. Any questions?
Mrs. Crosby?
No, very good.
I'm sorry.
Take it away from them, I'm not. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'm a good man. Sorry about that.
No.
My only question was the fifty-eight-ten that was struck from the bid for the school cafeteria. I understand budget-wise, but is there any way, I mean, and where I'm approaching this from is, if you're gonna have all these painters and they're gonna have other supplies there at Leonard Town High School anyhow, we can't squeeze fifty-eight hundred dollars from somewhere in order to just get it all done at once?
Or are you anticipating adding it into next year's phase when they do the classrooms?
It will get completed next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I will, I will adjust my budget, budget, budget's allowing, I will adjust as much as I can to get, I have to finish Leonard Town High whether it's this year or next year.
Okay.
I would love to do it this year.
I didn't know if that was like the last little piece and I'm like, man, for fifty-eight-hundred dollars, if that's what we're doing is, you know, just, because it's just disruptive and, you know, people working there during the summer, so.
I do agree.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's, in the course of the operations of Maintenance Department, it's really early in the year to be looking at the budget that way. We don't know what's gonna happen during the winter.
I understand. I was just, I was just going to present it as.
I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. Painting is essential to maintain the interior appearance of the school and then appearance of the interior of the school, let the students, staff, and community know that we value education, we value the learning that's going on inside, and we value conducive learning environment and community environment. So, it's time for these buildings to be painted, just like our home needs painting and we have to maintain our buildings. And we know that Saint Mary's County Public Schools are among the cleanest and most attractive in the state of Maryland. And I thank the whole Supporting Services for all the work that they do to make sure that we stay on track as much as possible to maintain our reputation in the state of Maryland. So, thank you very much.
Has this company done work for us before?
Yes, they have.
And when, did they paint Chopticon? Were they the ones that painted?
No.
Did the painting on Leonardtown High School last year?
That was actually, no, Chopticon High School was done by another company that didn't respond.
Okay.
And they were out of Norfolk.
Got it.
Tito does, has done our gymnasiums at Benjamin Banneker, Leonardtown High School, and they've done some exterior painting on some of the state units at Leonardtown High School. They've done some interior painting at, if memory serves, it was, I really can't recall.
But you're comfortable with the quality of the work?
Yes.
And I am glad that you have put the deadline into the contract that you have, because I know last year, they were in the school trying to paint. When they were doing open house, they had to be told, I understand, they had to be told, "You can't be here." And as students were coming back, the paint was still tacky, so.
That was, that was this contractor here.
Okay. So, I appreciate that you have taken those lessons into account to ensure that the paint has time, that the work is done well before students arrive back and that we have the best chance at having a good outcome from this. So, thank you very much for anticipating that.
Not a problem.
That's the extent of my questions.
Okay. All right, then I am seeking a motion regarding this action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Saint Mary's County approve the contract award to Tito Contractors Incorporated of Washington, DC in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for bid items one, two, three, and five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Next is Ms. Melissa Charbonne.
Mm-hmm.
Professional Services Contracts for Special Education.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here this morning to request the Department of Special Education and the Department of Fiscal Services is seeking the board's permission to enact the contracts for contracted We are unable to fill all of, well, we have two vacancies for speech-language pathologists that are in the local budget, but in addition to that, we need the additional positions for these contracts for related services. They include speech-language pathologists, occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision services, orientation and mobility, and learning adjustment therapists. The use of contracted licensed professionals and health-related agencies is required to provide the services that are prescribed in the Saint Mary's County Public Schools' Students Individual Educational Programs, IEPs. This is to ensure that all of the students are receiving a free and appropriate public education and to ensure that Saint Mary's County Public Schools is compliant with the IDEA. The total projected cost for the anticipated professional service contracts for the fiscal year is one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, or, let me go back, one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-two, five-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars and thirty cents. These funding sources include the local budget, medical assistance, and federal pass-through monies. Do you have any questions?
Mrs. Crosby?
It's expensive, but it's necessary because you've got to comply with the IEPs. Good job.
Thank you.
I don't have any question. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Mrs. Charbonne. You've done a good job in making sure that we are in compliance with the law and we have to meet the educational needs of each and every student in our system. And I thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing.
Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
I know that we're not the only school system in the state that struggles to fill such specialized positions. At the same time, it's important not only to make sure that we are providing the services for the students, but that we're not having to necessarily send them out of county when we're able to provide these services. So, I don't have any questions, just that observation that we're not alone in seeking this, these specialized positions and we fill them the best way we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I am seeking a motion regarding this action item.
I move that the Board of Education approve the professional services contracts for special education by the providers recommended for the speech-language, occupational therapy, vision services, orientation and mobility services, and learning adjustment program therapists for a grand total of one million, three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and thirty cents, with funding sources from medical assistance, local contracted therapists, and federal pass-through grants.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And if you just want to stay right up there for your opposed special education staffing plan?
All righty. Each year, the local application for federal funds requires that I present to the Board of Education my staffing plan, which is to be included in the application for federal funds. In February of nineteen ninety-nine, the State Board of Education approved revisions to the Code of Maryland Regulations, COMAR, requiring that local educational agencies submit to the Maryland State Department of Education a staffing plan with the following elements. What I have presented to you, you have a hard copy, and what I am presenting today is a brief summary of what that staffing plan is. Included in that must be evidence of public input. In March, at the Citizens Advisory Committee, I presented the initial draft when we were working with, still working with the budget. And at that time, I had not yet received the allocation or the proposed allocation for federal funds. So, like we do in any budget process, we give it our best guess of what the funding will be and work with that. This provides the second opportunity for public input. Monday night, next Monday night, is the July meeting for the Casey. I'll be presenting the plan that I'm presenting today. We'll have thirty days for any input. What we've typically done is we post it on our website, Casey posted on their website, and we invite public comment. And then, I have, I believe I'm on the agenda for the next board meeting where I would ask for approval of the plan. You also have the calendar of how the plan is developed and how we provide for that. Evidence of maintenance of effort is the budget piece of this. I have included this year in your staffing plan, let me back up, I'm not there yet, where the budget pieces come from and how it's allocated, how different staff are funded through different sources. The next piece that we have to look at is the staffing patterns for service providers. When we begin to sit down and we look at what variables do we consider, the first and foremost is what do the IEPs say? What are we prescribing and what are, what are the things that our children need? We also look at the number of children that need to be served. We're very cognizant of what natural proportions in student populations are. We want to make sure that we're not over-identifying or under-identifying. And then, lastly, we look at what are staff responsibilities, which is a balance that we have to take into consideration with what are the additional duties that a special education teacher has above and beyond what a general education teacher do? How are they comparable? What is the give and take in that? But by far, the more challenging piece of that is to look at what are the responsibilities of related service providers? They're not classroom teachers, but they are a fairly significant proportion of what's included in the staffing. When we're looking at teachers and special education teachers, a formula that we have used across the state of Maryland for as long as I can remember has been to use a census-based formula. Part of that is to look to ensure that our kids remain in their least restrictive environments. So, the formula that we use is one special education teacher per two-hundred general education students enrolled in the K-five program. This will help us maintain that proportional representation of around ten to twelve percent. This provides our teachers with an average caseload of about fifteen students. And when we work with our building administrators, we encourage them to look at developing individuals, or the teachers, to develop their individual schedules and for the principals or the administrators to make sure that they're taking into compete, into consideration both the instructional responsibilities of a special education teacher and the compliance responsibilities. Compliance includes things like developing the IEP, updating the IEP, which is like a report card. So, those are similar to a teacher's. What is not included is the amount of time for collaboration with each other, for parent communication, which can be very intensive at times, and then the number of IEP meetings and the preparation for the IEP meeting and then the follow-up for the IEP meeting, assessments, assessment reports. Those are all done individually as opposed to what a gen ed teacher might be doing as she's doing with a group of kids. In the middle school, I love middle school. I was a seventh-grade general ed teacher and a special ed teacher. They're kind of in-between kids, so we kind of ramp up the adult ratio there. And so, the census for middle school is a hundred and fifty to one teacher. We're still able to maintain caseloads of around fifteen. Some of the teachers are gonna have more, some teachers have less, but as I go through every year, that's one of the things I look at. And if you take all the numbers of kids and divide it by all the numbers of teachers, we're still coming up with an average of about fifteen kids per special education And then, in high school, we have kids, we've given them intervention, they are young adults, they're more independent, they need less of that kind of hands-on, and so, we ramp that back up to about two-hundred students to the one general edu, I mean, the one special The related services, this is what I was talking about before, is where we try and find a balance. Probably the hardest part for people to understand is the difference between, or what the purpose of related services are. A related service provider's services are to allow a student additional supports to access the curriculum. That's the educational model. That is not a medical model. And I think sometimes, families are looking, teachers are looking for that one-on-one where we're gonna take, I was a speech pathologist, you all know, a million years ago, where I walked around the hall, I gathered out my little chicks, and I took them down the hall, and we did language therapy. And then, at the end, I took my kids back to the classroom and dropped them off. As you can imagine, that's not the best model for accessing curriculum. The best model is when our related services are embedded in the classroom, are providing those services for the children, so that we have good generalization across. Maryland also was, and, I mean, Saint Mary's County was also part of a state work group that has been going on for the past two years to really look at the struggle that all of us are having and balancing, because most of us came out of trainings that really had a more clinical approach. And trying to look at what does that look like when you put medical services inside a classroom? So, we have two members that have been very active. We had, you know, one, I'm looking at you. We have a physical therapist and an occupational therapist. We did have two on the state work group. And what we were doing, and they were working with their professional organizations to try and see what the balance is, and look at a workload approach. And they came up with some recommendations this year, their final report. And the reality is, is there probably no LEAs in Maryland that are able to really follow the guidelines according to the recommendations of the work group. So, our related service providers are carrying a significantly heavier caseload than what's recommended by their professional organizations. So, their current workloads for occupational and physical therapists are working somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five students per caseload. We're supplementing that with contracted services. The heaviest piece of that, of course, is our infants and toddlers program. We want to, you know, provide more intensive interventions at the earliest level. And those are also families who are, where we have children working in their natural environments, which means they're at home or at a daycare. So, our providers then are having to travel to the different sites. Our speech-language pathologists also are carrying a maximum load. We look at thirty-five to forty-five students. Some of them are as high as fifty or fifty-five. We're also supplementing with contracted service providers. About half of our SLPs are contracted. In our regionalized programs, these are programs for children with the most intensive needs. In your staffing plan and your report, there's a brief description of who is eligible and appropriate for those programs. And in that, we use a ratio formula as opposed to a census formula. So, because these children need more intensive needs, we try and keep that ratio for infants and toddlers of about one teacher to twenty-five students. And there's a para educator. It doesn't mean there's twenty-five little people together at the same time, it's just their caseload. Most of the infants and toddlers- Most of the infants and toddlers programs are, because I mentioned earlier, are in the home. That's going to be just a one-on-one. However, we have playgroups for them, we have formalized and structured playgroups, we have language groups. And we might have three or four children. But we're also, the purpose of our infants and toddlers program is really a parent training program. So we want our moms to be there, or grandma, or whoever is the person who is with that child most of the time. In our special ed preschool programs, it's again, it's a one teacher and one para, which are the expected staffing. Typically though, in the PSSC programs, we'll also have a speech therapist who is in and out. We may have, provide applied behavior analysis, so for some behavioral support and social support. So the ratio, even though it's one to nine, oftentimes, we're looking at a real ratio of about three to one, which is excellent. The learning adjustment program, again, is on all of these, we're looking about one to nine. But when we went back and looked at actual bodies in the classroom and actual services, most programs end up with about a three to one ratio. In the LAP program, when we look at successes on that, we don't have, we have actually reduced the number of children that we have in non-public placements, and we have held it to about thirty-five kids for the past three years. And that is a result of the good work that the folks are doing in the sale program and the learning adjustment program and our compass program. Those are typically the children that we might be looking at for a non-public placement. The sale program provides, in addition to the teacher and the para, included in that program is very intensive case management through the two folks that are stationed here at Mocley Street, I say stationed, they have a computer here, their bodies are out in the schools. But both of, it's our board-certified behavior analysts. So we have, we're lucky enough to have two. I don't believe either of our neighbors even have one, so it's a real kudo for us. And lastly, is our gateway to independence program. You all are familiar with that, thank you for attendance at graduation, for those of you that were able to make it. We have two students upstairs this summer from that program that we used DOR's funding, so they have paid employment with us this summer, who are learning some office skills. The last element of this is resolving concerns and requests. This is structured through federal and state requirements. At the lowest level, we do desk audits on all of the schools that are done every single month. The schools get reports back from the compliance piece of that. So we're able to catch problems early on before they grow into a big problem. We have excellent communication with our site-based administrators. Our special education supervisors are in the schools, they know the staff, they know the administrators. We work to ensure that schedules are, we help to make sure that schedules are maximized. I work with school leaders and site-based staff to resolve any questions or concerns that have. I've told you all before, and I'll say it again this year, I have a wonderful team. And this isn't something I'm doing, this is something the team is doing. And the last piece is evaluation, and we come back and look at, you know, what are, how are we in alignment with state initiatives? How are we in alignment with local initiatives? And I would say, I would like to, this is where I get to blow my own horn a little bit, our own horn. We continue to be recognized as the state leader for our innovative approach to early childhood programs. We are the only LEA in the state of Maryland that has broken down the barrier between general ed and special education for our youngest learners. And we have done that in cooperation with Dr. Marr and myself. And we have one coordinating supervisor who is accountable for birth through five. And I think the difference is that it's a fairly seamless transition. We look at what kids need, doesn't really matter what their label is, it's what do those kids need? And consequently, with Ms. Hall, Dr. Marr, and the Department of Special Education, there are almost a thousand ones, twos, threes, fours, and fives who are in programs, early intervening and early intervention programs. We have also been identified as a pocket of excellence for our partnership with the College of Southern Maryland. This particularly looks at our relationship and the programs that we have for our eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old students. They are no longer riding around on a yellow school bus, eighteen-year-olds don't ride on yellow buses. Eighteen-year-olds use transportation that's available to them locally. So we have children riding STS, they are able to independently move around the county. They're also, their classes are at the College of Southern Maryland, they have college IDs. They have employment, some of it's supported employment and some of it's independent employment. The, after our recognition of Dr. Harris at the April board meeting, I got a call from the LRP Publications, which is a national, the L, the R, and the P don't really stand for anything. But it's a national organization for attorneys who represent school systems, directors of special education, directors of the people on the instructional side of it. There's a huge conference every year, that's a phenomenal conference. And then they put out these publications. And we were highlighted in the online publication in the end of June on our partnership. So Dr. Harris got the call, they picked it up on the newsfeed out of one of the papers. And the guy called, and he interviewed Dr. Harris, and he interviewed me, and it's on the online publication, so. And then finally, we had achieved the highest state determination status, which is meets requirements for the state performance plan and the annual performance report, which is the federal report card, state and federal report card. That'll be changing next year, but this year, we met again. Do you all have any questions?
Other than you're really doing well.
Thank you.
Very well.
There's lots of hard work going on from staff.
I have one question and I have one comment.
Okay.
Going back to the number of instructors, I guess, per students, one of your earlier slides, like a hun, I thought it was a hundred for elementary educator, a hundred and fifteen?
For the middle, those are middle schools.
Right, middle school, sorry. Well, for either, for any level, is that system-wide? So let's say you have a pocket of children that, you know, you have a pocket of children that have IEPs that are greater in one school than another, can you move teachers around?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, we've done that.
Okay.
We moved, this year, we moved, it was a regional program, it wasn't for the general ed kids. But one of the things I've been trying to take, and you can only do it, you know, a couple, you know, you have to do it slowly. But I don't like in the regionalized programs to have a singleton in a building. It's hard to be the only sale teacher in a building. And when we've been able to, we've moved the children. We work with the Department of Transportation because we look at where the kids live.
Okay.
And so for this year, when we had two elementary compass programs. And it's hard for a teacher to be accountable for a curriculum that goes from kindergarten through fifth grade. So what we did this year is when Duke opened, right in the planning of that, we proposed to combine that program, so we have two classrooms.
Oh, okay.
And it allows, it allows teachers to kind of, either to have a primary program and an intermediate program. It also is an opportunity that when children are struggling or there's a conflict, you can have some, there's some flow back and forth between the two programs.
Okay, okay. And I have been witness, you know, to my daughter's own classroom, you know, the, whatever you may mention of not pull the children out for individual, you know, individualized, and I think, I mean, it's, it's, it's a great structure for, I think, all the children involved to have it, to have it that way, so.
Thank you, there are many benefits. There's benefits to general ed children to have, to provide that diversity in the classroom. And there are phenomenal benefits for the child with a disability.
Oh, absolutely, right.
To be included with their typical peers.
Right, so, no, excellent job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Very good report, and very easy to understand the way you presented it. And I want to thank you for doing that seamless transition for our students from public school to adulthood. They ride the St. Mary's County transit system, they have meaningful employment, and they attend the College of Southern Maryland, so they feel like adults and not children. So I want to thank you for also being recognized as a pocket of excellence. And your, and your recognition by the state for your innovation and your excellence. You're doing a fantastic job, and you and your team are doing a wonderful job. And St. Mary's County is a place where people want to come because they've heard our special education program is excellent. So thank you for continuing to do a wonderful job with the resources that you have. And I know it's tough, but you make it work for the students, and I thank you.
Thank you. We had a call last, two weeks ago, from Dr. Christie Stewart, who is the transition coordinator at MSDE. And she had gotten a call from a person at George Washington University who was calling MSDE looking for some model transition programs. And Dr. Stewart mentioned St. Mary's, she's the one that called us a pocket of excellence. The instructor at Georgetown said, is Dottie Powell still working down there? And Dr. Stewart said, yeah, and she, Dottie had been in her graduate program when she was getting her transition certificate, she said, I already know it's a good program if Dottie's the one out there running it. So we're known around the state, so.
And there's a lot of science behind your staffing patterns and how you deliver this model. But there's a great deal of art to it as well, and I appreciate that you combine that art and science. With respect to the comment about the, following the national recommendations and the various professional organizations, you know, my observation as a former critical care nurse is that there are a lot of academics involved in a lot of these national organizations. And they're looking at, understandably so, they're looking at the ideal model under the ideal circumstances and in an ideal world. And taking those ideals and then putting them in a realistic model as to how you deliver it with all of the, all of the ins and outs of that can be very challenging. And I appreciate that you do that so well. I would, I would love to be in an ideal world, but the reality is that doesn't, that just doesn't happen anywhere. So thank you for that. The one question I'll, or the one clarification I'd like you to provide, when you talk about average of one special education resource teacher per hundred and fifty general education students in middle school or two hundred for elementary, talk about the difference between a special education resource teacher allocated in that way and a special education teacher with a different caseload.
Well, it's the same person. So within their schedule, some of their duties may include coming in as a co-teacher in a classroom. So we're going to maximize the LRE for that student. In reading and mathematics, which is where the bulk of children with learning disabilities, or, I don't want to minimize, but when we're talking about academic challenges as opposed to social-emotional behavior. So the children with the academic challenges, that teacher, part of her day may be in a co-teaching situation, and part of her day may be in running an intervention group in those areas of reading and mathematics. So it's, it really, again, it depends on who the children are. It depends on, we'll tend to see in kindergarten, first, and second grade less need for a pull-out in an academic piece where the, the general ed teacher can differentiate the instruction. We have children cycling through centers, there's multiple opportunities for that language-rich environment. As kids get into third, fourth, and fifth, we begin to see those gaps in their learning. So the structure of that intervention may look a little bit different, depending really on the level where we're talking about and who the children are.
So as a resource, they're a resource for the general ed teacher and in a general ed classroom at times, and then with their own caseload of specific students that they're working with?
And those intervention groups at times are not exclusively children with IEPs.
Right.
So the schools are wonderful, I mean, we're really good in St. Mary's at being able to maximize resources. So when we're looking at a specific, you know, reading is where most of our kids are going to struggle. So when we're talking about reading interventions, we have staff that are very, very capable and competent at administering a reading, you know, intervention. The piece that the special ed teacher has that an IRT may not have is the accountability then for documenting that on the IEP.
Right.
And the collection of that data, and then the pieces that go with the IEP part.
I think what you've presented is very comprehensive and works well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just, Ms. Charbonne, as always, you do take very complex work, and you do make it understandable even to the layperson. You continue to educate me in all our interactions. So for your patience and the education you provide, thank you very much. And you do, you really pull together a great team. And, you know, it's, it is, and, you know, with Dr. Marr as well, and content specialists outside of special education bringing them all together. And it really, it's a fantastic thing to behold. So we are not a pocket of excellence, we're the pants, we're the whole suit, you know, we're the clothing store. Very nicely done, thank you, Ms. Charbonne.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, so with that, the next regular board meeting will be on Thursday, July twenty-third at nine AM. Shaking stuff up again in the summertime, it's Thursday date, it's the morning.
Coming together, once, one more time.
One more time. And I will adjourn, but I do invite anyone to, we are having a work session.
And can we start that at ten forty-five, we have staff that should be arriving.
That's fine, I think everyone probably needs a break, food, chocolate, whatever. Keep your dunch.